We had fun. Pass them. We mentioned you.
Lights go on and we're on.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this special school board meeting on July 30th, 2019 to order. The time is 5:00, oh, it was 5:05. We were on time and it just flipped. Anyway, 5:06. I have to read faster. The purpose of today's meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2019-2020 tentative millage rates and the 2019-2020 tentative budget. At this time, we requested all cellular phones be put in silent mode, and I would like to take the opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Today's agenda includes presentation of, on the percent of increase or decrease over rollback rate, proposed millage budget overview, proposed tentative budget, public hearing on tentative budget, adoption of the required local effort millage, basic discretionary millage, capital outlay millage, resolution determining revenues and millages, and resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2019-2020. FY '20 tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget, acceptance of the 2019 certification of taxable value, scheduling of the final budget public hearing, and then comments from board members, Board Attorney and Superintendent. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agendas presented? So moved. Okay, so that is Ms. Patrica moved and seconded by Ms. Jordan.
Ms. Morgan moved.
Ms. Morgan. Oh, it was Ms. Morgan, I'm sorry. Ms. Morgan and Ms. Jordan. Please record your vote. This is an online vote, ladies. And it passes seven now. Okay. I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Atkins, Dr. Greg Atkins, Superintendent, Dr. Amy Decimore, Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Kelly Lecter, Director of Business Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to turn this over to Dr. Decimore, who will take us through the tentative budget. Dr. Decimore.
You were too happy to do that.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Atkins, members of the board. This hearing is the first of two public hearings required under Florida statute to give the public an opportunity to provide input into the proposed millage levy and the budget for this fiscal year. The superintendent submitted his proposed tentative budget to you on July 26. This hearing was advertised in the news press on July 26 as well. The second and final budget public hearing, by your approval tonight, will be held on Tuesday, September 10, here in this room, and a notice of that meeting will go to the public through a direct mailing from the property appraiser's office. That mail document is known as the Truth in Millage Notice, or TRIM, notice, and is sent as required by law.
So, as outlined by TRIM, we need to first discuss the millage and the rollback rates. So, the rollback rate is the millage, which when applied to the current year's tax roll, net of adjustments for new growth, would produce the same dollars as received in the previous year. The calculated rollback rate for this year is 6.1952, and the proposed millage rate for this school year is 6.147. That's a decrease of .254 mills from the 2018-19 millage rate of 6.401, and that's a decrease of .78 mills from the rollback rate. And I just want to point out that that .78 decrease is all of the millages put together. If you look at just the required local effort portion, that there's a 3% decrease in the required local effort. As you can see, when you look at the millage comparisons, our required local effort is, this year it's 3.899, which is 3.892 of that is the new required local effort amount, and there's a .007 is the prior year adjustment that's included in that. And the prior year adjustment is the amount that we did not generate last year as was expected, so they add on to the required local effort amount this year to generate more money since we did not generate what they expected us to last year. And but those are a .254 decrease over last year's. The discretionary and the capital millage stays the same. The, that 2.54 is a, almost a 4% decrease over last year's millage rate, and you'll see later in the slides how that affects the individual taxpayer. This is a millage comparison, and as you can see over the last eight years, our millage rate has been declining. And when the millage rate declines, and you'll see in this next slide, that the tax roll history, that tax roll actually increases as our millage rate has been declining. We're about to climb back up to the amounts that we were in 2008 before everything started going down. Our tax roll this year is $90 billion, $90 billion, 848 million, 155,272, which is a 5.79% increase over last year's. The effect on the homeowner, if you were a homeowner that had a valued home at $100,000, and with the 5.79% increase in the tax roll, your new value would be 105,790. Based on that, last year you would have paid $640.10. This year you'll be paying $650.29, which is a $10.19 increase. If you are one of the lucky ones that has the Save Our Homes attached to yours, your value last year would have been 100%. The Save Our Homes does not allow more than a 3% increase in your value of your home, so your new value would be $103,000. Last year you would have paid $480.08, and this year you're actually only paying $479.47. So those with Save Our Homes this year will be seeing a decrease in their tax amount based on the new millage rates.
So that's, just to add a little something to that, that's an important point to note, and I think that's probably one that you'll receive from your constituents quite often. So across the board, because that millage rate decreased by almost 4%, and if a taxpayer's only, if their property value is only going up 3%, it's going to be a tax decrease across the board for those people in that position. And with this 5.79% increase, and we took those numbers to display in this slide because that's the overall tax roll increase, 5.79. Of course, depending on what the situation is, some will see a percentage increase much greater than that, some maybe less than that, but the average is 5.79. With the decrease in the tax roll, or the tax rate of 4%, that really mitigates that increase that they're seeing in the tax roll. So you see kind of on average what those, what that tax increase or decrease will look like for the individual taxpayer. So when they receive those TRIM notices in the mail, this is going to be, you know, very much like what you're seeing here will be what's going to reflect, be reflected on those tax rolls.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, you started out with one sentence where you said, "When the millage increases and decreases." Just say that sentence again.
So as our millage rates are decreasing, the tax, taxable value is going up. So the tax rate is going up, and our millage rates are going down. So that we're, when you go up, if the tax rate, if your millage rate stays the same, you would generate more dollars because the tax rate is going up. What's happening is as the tax rate goes up, the taxable value, they're bringing our millage rate down so that we're not earning more money.
Is there a difference between Save Our Homes and homesteaded property?
Save Our Homes, so I believe you have to be homesteaded to have Save Our Homes, and I don't know that they're applying new ones. I'm not sure of that, but I know it's an older one for people that have owned their homes for quite a few years. And Save Our Homes doesn't allow more than a 3% increase per year, and the homestead exemption is just, it's a $25,000 exemption applied to school districts if you're homesteaded. And there's another exemption for homestead, but that's not applied to the school districts piece.
Yeah. So, you know, a good question related to that, Ms. Gittens, related to that relationship between the tax roll and the millage rates, and that really is a function of the Florida Education Finance Program itself and the way that they calculate that. So because of the way they calculate the millages, anytime we're seeing our tax roll increase, then conversely, you're going to see that rate, the millage rate, come down unless they decide that they will hold true to the rollback rate, which, you know, typically just, they don't do. It typically just doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Which is one of the things that we've had conversations with the legislature about in the past, where, I mean, think about the extra money we could generate by just holding the tax rate steady. So it's not necessarily a tax increase, but because of your roll going up, you get that additional revenue. But they hit that, you know, below that rollback every time, and then, you know, that's that revenue that we are not receiving because of that calculation.
Okay, thank you.
Amy, would you just provide a little bit more context there? Historically, for decades, the rollback rate wasn't used, correct?
Well, it was not used. In other words, we did not, they would not give us or assign us the rollback rate.
Right.
That's, yes, that's right. It would typically be under that, yeah.
So, when did that change? It changed in what, '08? And that's when they started, that's when they started the rollback rate and then further rate cuts.
Yeah, so the calculation of the rollback rate has been in effect for a long time, as long as I can remember. And we typically have been assigned a millage rate below the rollback rate in every instance, with the exception of maybe one that I can remember. So, but we can go back and pull the history on that. It was in 2000, you're right, it was in 2008 or 2009 when they began to cut these other millages. So that basic discretionary used to be higher than it is now, and we got cut those back in 2008 or 2009. And then the capital outlay millage was at one point at 2.0, and through the course of a couple years, ending, I believe in 2010, it came down to 1.5.
Okay, thank you.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what the question that you're getting at is that they had for years used the rollback rate as kind of a guide, and then it had been rolled back somewhat, but not all the way back to the rollback rate. You know, so we were able to realize as a district a little bit of an increase. But, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe three years ago, I think this is the third year in a row where they've taken the rollback rate and they've actually gone slightly beyond the rollback rate. So we're actually getting less dollars than what we would have, even if they went at the rollback rate. So that's happened, I believe, again, this is the third year that they've gone beyond the rollback rate when setting the required local effort or the millage.
Okay, okay, very, yes, yes.
That's what I was, particularly for people who are relatively new to this process. I think it's important to understand where we are today versus where we have been.
Understood, okay. And what we can do is draw up, you said it was three years, and maybe even more than that, but what we'll do is go back and pull together kind of like a 10-year history of that, what that looks like in terms of what the rollback rate was and what, where we stood in relation to the rollback rate for the past 10 years. How about that? So we can pull that together and get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
So, the millage rates and what they'll generate for us right now. So the required local effort at 3.899 will generate $340,48,280. Our basic discretionary of .748 will generate $65,236,244. Our capital outlay at 1.5 mills will generate $130,821,344, for a total amount of $536,105,868,000. Now that is an $8.4 million increase over last year's amount, and that's primarily based on the basic discretionary and the capital millage, capital outlay millage, because those millage rates stay the same. When the tax roll goes up, we will generate more money in those two areas. But they do decrease the required local effort. So the required local effort is a decrease where the other two are increasing. So the tentative budget that we are recommending tonight is the $1,576,697,298, and that is made up of all of the funding sources at this time. We are going to be going through some of the funding sources. There's six major funding sources in the budget, and we'll go through each one of those. The general fund is our first, the biggest of our funding sources. It is the, the main operations of the school district is funded through here, and the instruction of our students is funded through this. It is budgeted at $908.4 million, and it is, it represents 58% of our total budget. That supports over 94,000 students for the next year, and we have used our increased resources to target the district initiatives. The Florida Education Finance Program, or the FEFP, is the biggest part of that. So this year, we're going to be earning $734 million from the FEFP. That is a $33 million increase over the previous year. As you recall, in some of our earlier discussions, we've talked about things that the legislature, legislative session has done. They moved the best and brightest into the FEFP, and that's part of that increase. It is a 3.5% increase in per pupil funding. The new per FTE is $7,807. Our base student allocation is now $4,279.49, which is an increase of $75.07. If you remember some of the discussions that we had also, is like, the digital classroom was one that they reduced the amount that they gave to us, and they put it into the flexible, into that amount, so they gave us more flexibility. However, we still have to fund those things that we were funding with that previously.
Is it $35? Is that really the BSA? If you take out best and brightest in electronics, I know that's not the right word, but...
Yes, we were left with a little less than half, so it was about $35 and some change, rounded to 36, yes.
Thank you.
So the, as we talked about before, our tax roll is a 5.79% increase this year, and our state funding is 45% of our budget. We wanted to mention right here about the lottery. There seems to be a lot of discussion and misconceptions about the lottery, so we wanted to talk about that a little bit right now. So we receive in the lottery about $3.8 million, which is not even enough to run our school district for one day. Some of the misconception is that we have flexibility with those dollars, and we really don't. You have two purposes that you can use those dollars for, and they're both required. The first one is school recognition. So any school that receives an A or increases in a letter grade or, and maintains the letter grade, an increase of two letter grades and maintains it, they get the school recognition funds. Those funds are then decided between SAC and staff how it's spent, and primarily they use it for staff bonuses and some things to help with the school move forward through their school improvement plan. The other portion goes directly into the SAC or the school improvement, and those funds, the SAC committee has full discretion over the use of those and must approve the use of those dollars, and it's basically to help the school meet their school improvement plan. So we have no discretion over lottery dollars to help us with anything raises or meet any of our goals or anything in the district.
Question. So previously, the money that went to SAC for schools, prior to lottery, where did that come from?
I believe it started with the lottery.
It did, okay.
Yes. And it used to be that they gave us enough in previous, that there was extra money after that, and we could use it, and we would hire additional para assistance and things like that. But now they've reduced the amount so much that we get from discretionary that what they do is first they pay the school recognition, so you get your dollars from school recognition. If you happen to have any money left over, then that is divided up between the schools for their SAC committees.
What's an average amount for a school? Is it a percentage, or how does that work?
And I should know that because we just actually ran it for last year, but I don't know off the top.
That's okay, you can let me know. No, I'm just, I was just interested. I know I was on SAC for a long time.
It's based on the school's FTE, and we take the total amount divided by the FTE and spread it throughout the school, so.
Okay.
So, in the operating funds, our main source of funding is, comes from our local funds, and that's at 55.65%. Our state funds are set at 43.80, and federal, which is a very small piece, is at .55%. So where do we spend our money? When you look at the graph, you can see that 70% of our funds go directly to the school for direct instruction and school expenses. We have our contingency for, you see the 4%, which is contingency and reserve, and as you know, we keep 3% contingency, which is required, of our new revenue, and that is set into that 4% total. We have our support services, our operations and maintenance, and then our student transportation are all pieces of where the money goes.
So you said on the, that 4% that it's required is 3%, and we keep 4?
Well, 3% is what is required for contingency, and we have that set aside. If you, the budget book that was given to you, there's some other additional dollars that are set aside. We set dollars aside for FTE shortfall, so if my projections are off and we don't see the students that we anticipated, I have a place to go back and pool some funding so that I don't have to go to the classrooms and affect those. At this time... At this time right now, we have money set aside for our unencumbered and our encumbered roles, so when we move our purchase orders forward and our budgets forward from '19 to '20, I have to have money in the back to pool that so I don't have to affect anything else in the budget. And that's what makes up that 4% right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Food service is another fund that we have, and that feeds our students breakfast, lunch, and supper if they choose to, at no cost to the parents. Currently, that budget is $67.7 million, and we are part of the community eligibility program, so there is no cost to any of our students. Special revenue is, are the grants that we receive. Our main grants are Title I and IDEA. We do have other grants that come in, Title II and Title IV, which are, you know, larger ones as well, but those are our largest two. Currently, that budget is at $44.7 million. This will continue to increase throughout the year as we receive those grants, the dollars will be increasing. So when I, we come back in September with the final budget, that number will be higher as well. Our capital funds are currently budgeted at $353.3 million. The primary funding source from these are our local capital property, property tax dollars and our sales tax, and I'd like to thank the community for supporting us in our sales tax initiative. Our main focus right now is safety and security upgrades, maintenance, maintaining and renovating our schools and upgrading our technologies and of course, building new schools to meet our growth. Our debt service is at $65.5 million. One thing I do want to point out, we had this discussion before, is that our debt service is not a separate set of funds that we receive. Our debt service actually is a transfer from our capital funds. So we have our revenue from our capital funds and then we transfer money over to pay our debt. And that is currently, we're estimating at $65.5 million. Excuse me, our, there is a requirement that you don't exceed more than 75% of your capital millage to pay for debt. We are at 53.5% of that capacity right now. And then the board has recommended that we don't use more than 50% of our capital millage to pay debt, and we're at 80.2% of that capacity right now. So we talked a little about, a little bit about reserves a few minutes ago, and that really just protects us in case of any, anything that might happen, such as another hurricane, let's hope not, or anything else that might come up. Currently, we have 3% set in contingency as we're required to do. So our, the budget that we're recommending tonight supports 120 schools, over 90,000, 94,000 students. It covers all the initiatives from the state, as well as supporting our vision and mission from here in the district. And we are centered on student achievement and envision 2030 with this budget. So our mission is to ensure each student reaches his or her highest personal potential, and we take that very seriously, and we respectively submit our budget to meet those So tonight, we're asking if you will adopt all of the proposed millages for the 2019-20 school year tentative budget, adopt the tentative budget for the fiscal year 20, adopt all resolutions related to the millages in the budget, and adopt the final public hearing date of September 10th, 2019. And I will turn that back over to you now.
It's my turn. I knew a song, but I won't, I won't bore you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing. We will now recess the special school board meeting and open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the tentative proposed millage rates and tentative budget for 2019-20. Dr. Atkins, please continue by stating your recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first recommendation is recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2019-20 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 3.899 mills with a proposed amount to be raised of $340,48,280. The required local effort, or RE, RLE, includes basic RLE of 3.892 and a prior period adjustment millage of .007. Recommendation number two, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2019-20 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mills with a proposed amount to be raised of $65,236,244. Recommendation number three, recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the 2019-20 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.50 with a proposed amount to be raised of $130,821,344. The total millage will equal 6.147 mills with a total amount to be raised of $536,105,868. The total millage rate to be levied is less than the rollback rate by .78%. Recommendation number four, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2019-2020. Recommendation five, recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2019-2020 school years, school year as follows. General operating in the amount of $908,342,481. Special revenue budget in the amount of $112,403,215. Debt service budget in the amount of $65,530,263. Capital outlay budget in the amount of $353,294,731. Internal service budget in the amount of $137,126,608, for a total tentative budget of $1,576,697,298. Recommendation number six, recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2019 certification of taxable value for Lee County Form DR42OS and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form. Recommendation seven, recommend the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2019-2020 millage levies and final budget for the 2019-2020 school year for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, at a special, specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center Board Room.
Did you teach math? I know, it's the... It's okay. I'm just glad I didn't have to put my commas in the right place, thank you for doing that. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these matters. The time allowed for comment is three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone on the right side of the hall? Anyone on the left? Okay, and I'll close the public hearing and reconvene the special school board meeting of July 30th, 2019. The board will now consider each of the superintendent's recommendations. And Dr. Atkins, please, I'm so sorry, restate, restate the recommendations, individually allowing the board the opportunity to vote before moving on to the next one.
Yes, Madam Chair. First recommendation, recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the 2019-2020 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 3.899 mills with a proposed amount to be raised of $340,48,280. The required local effort, or RLE, includes basic RLE of 3.892 and a prior period adjustment millage of .007.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Fisher, second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, any discussion? There being none, please record your vote, this will be an online vote. And the vote, motion passes 7-0. Dr. Atkins.
Next recommendation, recommendation two, recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the 2019-2020 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mills with a proposed amount to be raised of $65,236,244.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Morgan and Ms. Giavanelle, any discussion? There being none, please record your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Dr. Atkins.
Recommendation three, recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the 2019-2020 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.50 with a proposed amount to be raised of $130,821,344. The total millage will equal 6.147 mills with a total amount to be raised of $536,105,868. The total millage rate to be levied is less than the rollback rate by .78%.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Giavanelle, second, and Ms. Fisher, any discussion? And please record your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Dr. Atkins.
Recommendation four, recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Fisher, Ms. Vaughn, I think I heard that.
Ms. Giavanelle.
I'll just pick one, okay. Ms. Fisher. I'll tell you, Ms. Fisher and then, it was someone on this end, okay, Ms. Morgan.
Giavanelle, I didn't say anything.
Oh, it was Ms. Giavanelle, so sorry. You guys are, you know, becoming ventriloquists down here, okay. So it was Giavanelle and Morgan. Any discussion? Please record your vote. And the motion passes 7-0. Dr. Atkins, number five.
Hey, recommendation five, recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2019-2020 school year as follows. General operating in the amount of $908,342,481. Special revenue budget in the amount of $112,403,215. Debt service budget in the amount of $65,530,263. Capital outlay budget in the amount of $353,294,731. Internal service budget in the amount of $137,126,608, for a total tentative budget of $1,576,697,298.
Bless you. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Fisher.
Second.
Thank you for being nice and loud with that. That was Ms. Fisher and Ms. Giavanelle. Any discussion? There being none, please record your vote. And the motion passes 7-0. Number six, Dr. Atkins.
Yes, ma'am, recommendation six, recommend the Lee County School Board adept, adopt, accept, I should say, recommend the Lee County School Board accept the 2019 certification of taxable value for Lee County Form DR420S and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve? Let's go this end.
Somewhere.
I have Jordan and Vaughn. We have to find levity somewhere, so it was Jordan and Vaughn. Any discussion? Okay, please record your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Dr. Atkins, number seven.
Yes, recommendation seven, recommend the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the, on the final 2019-2020 millage levies and final budget for the 2019-2020 school year for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, as a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center Board Room.
But, board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation? Excuse me, okay, okay. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Fisher, fast on the draw, okay, and Ms. Giavanelle, is there any discussion? There being none, please record your vote. Excuse me, as you're entering the room, please, we're taking a vote. And the motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Atkins, for that. The next item on the agenda are comments from board members and the superintendent. We'll start with Ms. Fisher.
I'm sorry.
We're having board member comments, do you...
I have no comments at this time, thank you.
All right.
No comments, thank you.
No, thank you.
I have none.
I have none. Mr. Gabriel?
I have no comments, thank you.
And Dr. Atkins?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Let's see who goes first.
So moved.
It was unanimous, so I'll give Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Jordan. Any discussion? Okay, Jordan and Vaughn, please record your vote.
Oh, no. This is the longest one. Will you? It's the issue of... Yeah.
Got it, okay, and adjourn, we are adjourned at 7-0, well, thank you.